I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time we will need a roll call, and Mr. Lego is not present tonight. So, in his absence, call me.
Mrs. Dissing?
Here.
Mr. Klachasik?
Here.
Dr. Costo?
Here.
Mr. Bill Leonard? Mr. Dallas Leonard?
Here.
Mr. Matarazo?
Here.
Mr. Nemec?
Here.
Mr. Petrusi?
Mr. Stovar?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Kelly. And at this time, turn it over to Dr. Harris for information.
Thank you, Mr. Matarazo. Tonight, a couple of things, just for the information. Wanted to remind everyone that Kenny Wood is scheduled June 4th. And the tickets, remember, look online, because all the, Kenny Wood did not come in to sell tickets this year. It's basically done online. Summer learning camp invitations already went out to students in K-5. So that's been actually sent out to the parents. We're also doing some summer recovery at the high school with certain students who might need it for some of the different courses. I also wanted to make a comment that some of the new rules and regulations are impacting us on May 31st. After May 31st, there are some changes to the health policy. But actually, our school district will be done prior to that. So some of the changes that are coming down the line will just be a little bit too late to implement it, you know, for us, because our school was done prior to that. Some online percentages for next year. What we did is I sent out a survey, myself and the principals. We sent it out to the different parents who are currently online. We just did the people who were online pretty much most of the year, just about their thoughts about what they were planning on doing for next year, what they were seeking for next year. And out of, in K-5, we currently had 96 students. Next year, we have 12 students only who want to be online, and four did not respond. So that's only 16 students. In middle school, of the people, there's currently 89 students who are online, grade 6 to 8. Next year, there's only 13 who want to be online and four who have not responded. At the high school, there's a little bit more who would want to be online still. 9 to 12, there's 36 kids, but we still need 53. Because remember, we were looking into how we're going to support that and staff that, because we were going to have to do it, you know, different, hire a different teacher. But some of the numbers, in some cases, don't lie. So we also have e-Academy available and different offerings. So we're going to keep looking at that, keep monitoring that. And again, those numbers could change. This is only May, obviously, and we have several months until school starts. I also wanted to let you know about some of the different purchases that we're making tonight with some of our stimulus money. Would I, Mr. Ingles, because he's been spearheading all these, talk briefly about those?
Sure. We have some technology purchases. We'll be approving a video lab, 21 iMac computers, to upgrade the video lab that we have, where the students edit all their videos and the things that happen throughout the building and the projects that they're on. We also need a server in the video program. That's going to be replaced. It's about $25,000. That enables us to push all the content out to all the classrooms and also to stream all of the events that we have, you know, at the high school stadium auditorium and gymnasium. We're also going to need additional 20 iPads. That is for the additional enrollment that we have in kindergarten. The enrollment is up in kindergarten, so we, it's part of our one-to-one program that we make sure every child, every kindergartner has an iPad. We're also going to be adding 10 PCs and five laptops to the gaming program that we have at the high school. We have a gaming course that's very popular up here. There's also a club component of that, where the kids are in competitions and tournaments, where they travel to different schools and colleges and can compete against one another. So again, we're asking for some PCs and laptops to support that program. And we also have a middle school audio visual system that needs to be replaced. So every morning, the announcements are pushed out to all the classrooms and broadcast. That system is, actually, is probably put in initially back in the early 90s. And it is very out of date, and the one at Trafford shut down this year. And we had a very difficult time getting back up and running. So we need to upgrade all of the monitors, the encoder that pushes the content out and adds servers to each of those classrooms. So that'll be about $38,000.
That'll be both of them?
Both schools, middle school and, both Trafford and Penn Middle School, yes. So that's the technology purchases. That's going to total somewhere in the neighborhood of $130,000, $140,000. That will be used, we'll be using our COVID relief funds to support those initiatives. We're also asking you to approve textbooks for the next school year. We are going to approve science grades 3 through 8, McGraw-Hill series. So we've had a number of teachers that have piloted those programs over the last couple of months. And had a lot of discussions and conversations with them about the best programs that we were piloting. And ultimately, we decided to go with McGraw-Hill. So we'll be asking to approve that this evening. And then we're also going to ask you to approve the social studies curriculum in grades 3 through 5. That will be with SVAAS, S-V-A-B-A-S, I believe is how you spell it. It's, it's the old Pearson Prentice Hall program. They kind of took over, and now they have a new company called SVAAS. So that program, again, is 3 through 5, just elementary. So we'll be asking to approve all of those tonight. The costs, they're about $100,000 for each of those grade levels, 3 through 5 science, 3 through 5 elementary, and then 3, and then 6, 7, 8 science at the middle school.
Anybody have any questions about any of those purchases?
How many kids are currently enrolled for next year's kindergarten?
I think it's like 270.
Okay, it is up something.
Yep, and then we get-
I can double check for you tonight.
We always get some more by the time school starts, too.
Right, 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 right.
Any other questions?
Also, thanks to the teachers and, you know, who worked with Mr. Ingles all year, because this wasn't just an overnight decision for both social studies and science, as well as all the technology things. He, the teachers really spent a lot of time and commitment on it. So I do appreciate Scott doing all that, as well as all the students. So a lot of hours were spent choosing the right one.
It's a seven-year investment for each of those programs. So we, our textbook cycle goes about every seven years. So in seven years, we'll look to refresh everything at that time. And just one thing I didn't mention, we're purchasing hardback and online components. So when you buy, you can buy both of them together, so we have the flexibility. Elementary teachers and children really do like the hard copies still. But we also want that flexibility. If we ever need to go remote or have kids who need to be online, we have that option. So they're going to use a little bit of both.
I have a question, Mr. Harris. With Chromebooks we purchased, do you foresee, like, within the next decade or what, that textbooks will be obsolete?
A lot of them are, Mr. Petrusi. A lot of the ones at the high school and middle school, there was a lot of, in fact, I had the same conversation with my social studies teachers at the middle school. And they said, no, we don't need textbooks. Everything we do, we have the resources and the things that we have online. So many of the teachers, like, we don't, in our math program, we haven't purchased a textbook in many, many years. So we're using a lot of the programs that are out there and resources that are online. I will tell you that most of the elementary children and elementary teachers really do like something to write on or to see and to read and to touch. But we still use components that are online, but there's still something that'd be said for a paper copy at that age level. So we're weaning off of probably more in the middle school and high school than we are in the elementary.
Are we headed, are we headed that direction of middle school and senior high school?
Absolutely, just as example. We don't, we don't have any hard books in math or social studies right now in the middle schools. And a number of our courses at the high school, we have not purchased.
How about English and science?
Well, we have the English textbooks as a resource, but they're anthologies or big books. They kind of use them for some stories and passages. But again, it's more of a resource that they use. It's not something they go page by page every day and go through the whole book all year long.
So you, you do foresee, at the secondary level, that they possibly all Chromebooks, Ed?
Well, yeah, we do so much on the Chromebooks right now. But to say that everything's going to be 100% eliminated, I don't think you'll ever see that. There's always a place for some text, depending on the course, the subject, and what we're working with. But we are definitely moving in that direction.
Thank you.
And like Scott said, some of the companies, if you buy the online program, you just get the book for, as well as a given. They go together. So it's just like, you might as well just take the book also, especially for the kids who rely on that. All right. Thank you, Mr. Ingles. I have another report. This is from Mr. Hetrick. He gave me the sports update. This spring, 12 Penn Trafford seniors committed to continue their athletic and academic careers at collegiate level. Robin Caswell will be going to Stevenson University for ice hockey. Taylor DiStefano, Carlisle University Soccer. Allison Doran, Mercyhurst for field hockey. Sarah Eisenhuth, Westminster College for softball. Joshua Capson, LaRoche College for basketball. Lucas Killen, University of Pitt, Greensburg for soccer. Sidney Marchand, for Geneva College for soccer. Kayden Orders, Bethany College Lacrosse. Mackenzie Powell, Westminster College for soccer. Austin Prokopak for Clarion University, where Scott and I both attended, for swimming. Joseph Whipke, Grove City College for cross-country. And Benjamin Yant, can, I hope I say this right, Canisus College? Am I saying that correct? Canisus, okay, Canisus College for swimming. Records with one week left in the regular season. Varsity baseball, 10-5, we clinched a playoff spot. Junior varsity baseball, 11-3. Girls varsity softball, 10-4, clinched a playoff spot. Were section first place, ranked number one in the Ripple. Boys varsity volleyball, nine, we have a, it says 9, 2, and 2, section first place. Junior varsity boys volleyball, were 10, 1, and 2. Boys varsity tennis finished in second place. It was a 5-1 loss in Ripple team playoffs. Boys lacrosse was, and girls lacrosse, boys had 2-7, girls 3-10. Both lacrosse club teams are growing and improving. High school track from West Vernon County meet. PT Boys placed 5th of the 13th teams. Girls placed 9th out of 13th place teams. Some medal winners included Joe Whipke. He was the first place in the 800 meters. Patrick Driscoll, 2nd place in the 3200 meters. Ian Demary, 2nd place 100 meters. Logan Hummer, 3rd place 100 meters. Mason Michalos, 4th place pole vault. Nathan Schlessinger, 1st place discus, and 6th place javelin. For the girls, Katie Shaw, 2nd place 400 meters. Chloe Bonson, 2nd place 3200 meters. We also wanted to recognize that Ripple Scholar Athlete winner this year was Julia Halk. So she did an excellent job. And she's also a valedictorian. And Carrie wanted to mention that this year, adding the turf infields, we have got in as many baseball softball games as any program in the Ripple, in spite of the five-day shutdown. So I do know, we were able to play that one Friday, when most schools weren't. So thanks for all the board members for that purchase and for the field upgrades.
Dr. Harris, when does the baseball softball players' playoff start? Next week?
Yeah, they said this is our last week of regular season. And I wanted to turn this over to Mr. Petrusi, because we have information about Carl Bruno.
Okay. It was my pleasure to, my, I believe, my first eight years on the school board, to work with Carl Bruno. World War II veteran, very dedicated. Give you 110%, every day he was here. Had a great feeling for people. And he, when he was here, and I was, first time I was the president of the board, we, if we had to close some elementary schools. Trafford Elementary School, Claryge Elementary School, and Penn Middle, Middle, Elementary School. And he told me, prepared me, you know, how to handle a group and everything else. And especially Penn Middle School, the York family, they beat us up. They beat me up big time. Because that was it, and the grandmother, York, she was there. I was the 41st student, and I really felt bad for her. She, everything she said was 100% true. But she, you know, and he says, Nick, we have to close these schools. He says, there was only a handful of kids going to Penn Middle School, and Claryge was right down the mills of McCullin. He said, we can put Trafford in the middle school. And we did it, the bottom floor, till we built the elementary. But he was knowledgeable. He had the mox, he knew how to handle people, and the negotiations were good. And our finances are very strong, and we are indebted to Carl Bruno. I had a fortune to work with him for 14, well, he was here 14 years. Then I worked with Dr. Marassi for 15 years. And they, they told me about renovations, you know. I always say, you gotta put one mill, one mill, one mill. I cut it from them. They were great teachers, nades, were good guys, and very honest, hard-working people. And Carl was top of the list. And he, he was big on sports, too. He was, he was a good guy. That's all I have.
Question on that history lesson, wasn't Bokeh one of the ones that was closed in, too?
I don't remember, I wasn't here for Bokeh.
Bokeh was a two, two-room school. I went there in 5th grade, and I graduated in 1970, so that's iffy.
What was the administration building, Dallas?
It was an elementary school. But that was, Sam, Sam Namarky went there, our retired custodian, or he was a van driver.
They didn't have kindergarten, that was 1 to 5 or 1 to 6, how they do, you know?
I'm not positive, I didn't go there, so I'm not positive. It was, it was-
Now, Penn is interesting, because-
Penn Borough, now, not to be confused with Penn Middle, it was Penn Borough.
Penn Borough was interesting, because in their building, you can go 1 to 10 in their building. Then the-
It was a small building.
Yeah, it was well-kept, though, very well-kept.
Well-built.
And 11 to 12, you had a choice, go to, is that called Penn Joint or Jeanette? And of course, the recruiting went on, you know. Jeanette got all the football players. Their girlfriends went with them. You know, but that was, not too many came to Penn Joint. I heard that quite a few times. But that's, it was, I never, I never heard of school. Paul Reaville was the one that told me it was 1 to 10. And, you know, and I said, Paul, I never heard that story. Yeah, well, it was 1 to 10. And he said, you know, I said, okay, you know, but that was, that was Penn Elementary School. But closing those three buildings, you know, and, and also Carl, his frugality, you know, he's, we had two principals, for, at that time, seven elementary schools. So, you know, his, you know, that wouldn't work today. But again, and he was, and he was staunch in that, too. You know, he's, he was, and he had also believed, too, that the secretaries had a lot to do with this elementary school, had a lot to do with running the building. And, and he was right. You know, when his principals are out, you know, secretaries like assistant principals, you know. And they, they did, they did very well, very well. He was, he knew, he read people very well. But he was, he lived a good age, you know, and I was, and I'll tell you this, though, I tell my fellow board members this.
96?
96.
96, yeah.
96. My fellow, I just told him this in private, but I ain't saying, I'll say it publicly, too. We had two Osipic girls in central administration. Linda, and Linda was one of, was the boss here. You know, you, you had to know where you were going to sit, and she told you where you were sitting. And she put that name tag there, and you sat there, you can't switch it up. She was very much a good, real good person. And Mary Ann was her sister, and she was younger. But Mary Ann, I guess the Osipic father, I guess, had passed away. And he developed such a good rapport with the Osipic girls. They even visited him, I think, once or twice a year out in Central Portis State. He came to us, I think, from Huntington, I could be wrong on that. And, and Mary Ann, when she got married, I was told, I wasn't at the wedding, but she said that Carl walked her down the aisle. That's the kind of relationship that they had, which I thought was outstanding. But he was, he really helped out the district, very dedicated, very strong. He knew how to handle people real well, too.
Mr. Petrusi, thank you so much. Those watching, you just got a history lesson free of charge. I think it's most appropriate-
I'm an old man, I give you a lot of history lessons.
I think it's most appropriate, as a board, out of our respect for someone who gave 15 years as a superintendent to this district and help in our foundation, if we could please have a moment of silence in respect for Mr. Bruno, Dr. Bruno. Thank you very, very much. Turn it back over to Dr. Harris.
Oh, hi, Mr. Matarazo.
Well, I can ask you one more question. Tell us about the prom, some of the things that have been going on up here.
Well, they did have, oop, your microphone, excuse me. I'm sorry. I was coughing, so I turned it over shortly. They had the senior farewell dinner. We had about 184 in attendance. And they had a grand march. And luckily, at 4:30, it just got bright out, as bright as it can be. We were worried about that all day long. And it was just like someone turned on a life switch at that time, because it was just, it just came out. So it was a nice opportunity for the kids, because we had to do the grand march outside if we had parents who actually, we wanted our parents and the families to see you. And during it, inside, due to all the numbers and restrictions, we couldn't do it. So I think we were watching that weather all day long and praying real hard. And it turned out great, so the parents got to see it. And it was, although it was a quick event, it's just something, it's important to see. I already say, it's hard to describe until you actually have kids who go through and go through the process. You know, just to see everyone there. Plus, it was nice to see all the friends and, you know, your kids' friends, all the kids you watched. Especially, like, my, you know, grow up, and you see them when they're kindergarten and 12th grade. And it's just nice to see. It's kind of like the whole, so I'm really glad that the parents and visitors got to watch it.
How many days of school are left?
There's actually 14 days left in the school year. So very exciting.
Hard, but in that 14 days, there's so much going on.
We have a lot going on in those 14 days.
Let me share a little bit, so people may be-
Just different events at the elementary schools and middle schools, who try to keep all the end-of-year celebrations and different things they like to do. Testing is done for the PSSAs. We still have Keystone testing for the next week for the high school, and as well as the 8th graders who take the algebra class. So that's one testing. During the Keystone's, because the 11th and 12th grade don't have to take it. And during, it's tradition that they used to come in late, but this year, we're actually having them just stay home during that time and doing it asynchronous. And of course, there is a senior, we can't wait, parade, which started last year. That was, and we're doing it as well. And then we're also doing graduation the day after.
That senior parade is open to the public, so please come and cheer on these kids. And also want to keep thanking Mrs. Kelly on the other side here. And please, take a look at the Penn Trafford news. There's tremendous pictures and stories in there, from elementary to high school, and all sorts of activities. So again, Mrs. Kelly, thank you for the great job you're doing in PR work for our school. Thank you. All right. Does any other board members have any questions about information? Nope. All right. Now we move on to recognition of visitors. And procedure for audience recognition, you must state your name, please, address, and group affiliation, if any. Your statement will be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements shall be directed to the president, and no participant may address or question a board member individually. You may be interrupted if your statement is too lengthy, personally direct, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. And we're fortunate tonight, want to say thank you. We have Leigh Anne Chisco as a visitor. Please come up to the mic.
Hey, hi. My name's Leigh Anne Chisco, and I live on Dotchalo Road. I have two children that are at the Penn Trafford High School, and I also have two children. One graduated from Virginia Tech, and the other one's at VMI. And I'm here today to positively acknowledge Dr. Cap, Brian Carlton, and the Penn Trafford staff for caring about my son, who's Boaz, who's in 10th grade. And he was falling behind, and he was on the road to failure. My background, I'm also a teacher, and I understand the demands of the field, especially now with COVID and the teachers and the children and the kids, and if they're homeschooling or hybrid or going to school. I'm also a single mom with four children. Boaz's father left when he was 11. None of my kids or he has had any contact with him. So Boaz has really had no father figure since he was 11. You know, I've tried, my nature is a little bit passive. I think Boaz needed, needs a little bit more structure and enforcement, and I kind of, I think, needed to realize that. He was doing virtual school. He didn't want to wear the mask at school, so I let him stay home. And prior to that, my kids all did virtual school with PA Cyber. And Boaz was my first to go to brick-and-mortar school. He started junior high when he was in 8th grade. My daughter switched to Westinghouse, which was a performing arts school, when she was in 9th grade. The other two were homeschooled with PA Cyber. So I thought I would be somewhat comfortable with that. However, Boaz was a wrestler, is a wrestler, and he had UCL surgery. He tore his UCL when he was wrestling and had to have surgery. If you're familiar with that, that's kind of like what the baseball players sometimes get. And so he was in a big cast, and he couldn't write or do anything for four or six weeks. He couldn't move or do anything. So he was sort of using that as an excuse. He was, got depressed. He told me he was logging in, and I would wake him up for school. I thought, I watched him log in, I would go downstairs. I was there all day. He, sometimes there would be a note that would come up, he's, he didn't, he's tardy or whatever. And he'd say, oh, I had a glitch in my computer, and I believed him. But he wasn't doing it. And so the next thing you know, he was cited for truancy. He was fouling, getting all F's. He was doing nothing. He wasn't logging in. It was really bad. I was really upset. And Dr. Cap, and Brian Carlton, who's his, he has an IEP for anxiety, came to my house. And I wasn't there that day, I was judging a gymnastic meet. And my daughter called and said, there was some people and the police at the house. I was like, what? And my heart was pounding, I'm like, what's going on? So my son, who's 24, he was home, and he went out there and found out it was truancy. And called me back and said, what had happened? And it's probably the best thing that ever happened. I called Dr. Cap, I said, thank you. Thank you for coming to my house and, you know, bringing, bringing the police and letting us know how important this is. But the main thing is that they gave him a second chance. You know, they said, if you go to school and you don't miss, and your grades go up, you know, you'll pass. And so that's what Boaz did. He hasn't missed a day of school since the home visit. His grades improved, and he has, like, all As and Bs, a couple Cs. And, you know, he had all F's. So, you know, I just want to thank Dr. Cap and Brian Carlton and the Penn Trafford staff, you know, for caring about my child and helping him to succeed. You know, I think, you know, he's now on the path to, like, fulfill his dreams. And I want to thank you from my heart.
We want to thank you for coming here and sharing that story. I mean, I'll take my mask off, I'm sorry. We wanted to thank you for coming and sharing that story and informing us about, you know, Dr. Cap and Mr. Carlton. And I think that was very powerful, so.
It's just very hard, you know, being a single mom and trying to do your best. And as a mom, I'm a little bit, you know, I'm not as authoritative, and I'm a little bit passive. And it's just so, they just made me realize how important it is that he has structure in the home school, isn't working for him, or the virtual school. And they really took the time to help us and to help him get on track. And they gave him a second chance, and he's, he's, like, blossoming. He has friends and, you know, I think they basically saved him, so thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Sharing that, and I'll let them know as well.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Harris, could you share a similar situation? We have students that are not sure they're going to graduate what they want to do. How do you and Mr. Ingles handle that?
We work directly. A lot of it falls onto, this year especially, you know, Dr. Horvath being the 12th grade assistant principal. She's actually handles the 12th grade, and Mr. Dr. Cap has a lot to do with that as well, and all the guidance counselors-
Thank you again, Jim, so much. You don't have any leave, but you're welcome.
And the teachers. So we do have a plan. There's a lot of different things that everyone's doing. If there's something out there that we can do, we're doing it. I mean, we're trying our best.
Well, you meet with kids.
We have 14 days, we meet with kids.
You actually meet with them individually?
Yes, we do.
And I don't know many school districts that do that, to take the time to identify and then meet with them individually and try to help them know that somebody cares. And just appreciate that so much.
And I think the parents have the best, which is everyone needs a second chance, so.
Any other comments, any board member?
There, you're right, Mr. Marado. There is every effort to make sure that every child graduates. And honestly, if they don't graduate, it's not because of there's a lack of effort or try on our part. We've truly given them every opportunity and every chance that we can possibly give them. So, and we take it as a failure when they don't graduate. So, you know, Mr. Cap, Dr., Mr. Aquilio and Dr. Horvath, they all do a great job with it, as well as the counselors and Dr. Harris. They all do their part in making sure that every kid is identified. Mid-year is when it starts. You know, you can start seeing the signs mid-year, and we do our best to make sure that they graduate.
Now, she referred to Dr. Cap, and that took me by surprise a little bit. Who was she referring to?
Mr. Capacioni.
Capacioni.
Yeah, he, he got his doctorate, it was about a year ago, I think. Yeah, he's Dr. Cap.
Oh, maybe two years.
So thank you very much. Prior to this meeting, we had an executive session. The Board of Directors convened- The Board of Directors convened for an executive session at 6 o'clock PM and we discussed personnel and negotiations. Also, prior to that meeting, the Personnel Committee met an executive session on, at 5 o'clock to discuss personnel matters and contracts. Okay, at this time, we move on to the Consent Agenda for Separate Action. The Consent Agenda, its actions considered routine, which have been previously discussed by the Board, will be enacted under one motion unless removed for separate action by Board member request. Does anyone on the Board wish to remove any item from the Consent Agenda? Okay. So Consent Agenda. If there's no items to be removed from the List of Consent Agenda, may have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items as submitted under one motion.
Motion.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
It's been moved, seconded, question? Okay. Question being called, this will be a roll call vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now that means we move on. At this time, we go to the Personnel and Curriculum Section, Mr. Petrucci.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Moved to accept the following return resignations. Joanne Joan Spiehar, PCA McCullough Elementary School effective June 1st, 2021. And Sandy Smiditt, that's my, I gave my buddy Dr. Cauchy, I'll go through that one. Paraprofessional, PCQ at McCullough Elementary School effective May 28th, 2021.
Second.
Second. Question? All righty. Question being called, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
I just want to interrupt. Both ladies are going to be extremely missed. They've been here for a long time, serving our need, our students with extra needs who need the help. And because of ladies like Joan and Sandy, we have students who are able to get the help they need and do well in school and succeed. And we need more and more PCAs and paraprofessionals out there because we have, a lot of our ladies are retiring this year. We lost five. And I know we always have a need to, so, but both Joan, she was actually one of her, she was actually the highest on the seniority list, as well as Sandy, they was very high up there. They gave a lot of years to various kids at different schools. So they're both be missed because what they do is very important and it's hard to find them, it's hard to get the special people like them to come in and take these jobs. So I do want to appreciate everything they've done for the district.
Thank you. Next subject is approve an early graduation request.
Okay, moved to approve Anna Bidra for early, early release and graduation from the class of 2022. Anna has been recommended by the high school principal and superintendent. Verification will be on file July 19th, 2021. Monday after summer graduation date, that Anna has fulfilled all state and district requirements for graduation in accordance with state law and district policy. Congratulations, Anna.
We have a second.
Question?
Okay, I'd like to ask the question. Dr. Harris?
Yes.
What are the criteria for someone to have a grad, early graduation?
They, they have to meet all the credits exactly like everybody else, they just completed earlier. So, I'm sorry, all the, I have to take this off. All the different credit requirements are the same, nothing, like they just completed prior to their senior year, so she's met all the credit requirements.
Then there are circumstances that people ask for that, correct?
Everyone's different. We had one last year doing it this time too, but everyone's different and some people, a lot of our people who are seniors this year could have probably graduated earlier but chose not to. It all depends on their courses and their goals and she, she's just choosing to do it, so very proud of her and she meets all the requirements, so she's definitely capable of graduating.
Good. Any other questions?
I do. Whenever I was reaching that time to graduate from high school, I had completed all my college prep, everything by, by the junior year and except there was always the issue you had to take health, math and English, I think, for each year. Is that, is that something that they take a different math or something?
Remember, we offer a lot of courses throughout the summer as well and you can also double up different courses. And a lot of our courses are also offered to some students, like now you can start taking some of your college, I mean, your high school credits in ninth, I'm sorry, eighth grade, so. A lot of different possibilities opened up, like over the years. They weren't available even when I went to school, you went to school, it just, you didn't have them. But now a lot of the kids can take advantage of this opportunity. But again, we don't have too many that do, as you know, and we just have one on this list.
Are there any other questions? Okay, it's been seconded, question being called. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All righty.